Sorry, I'm just doing what. On the question. So it looks like they moved the raise hand feature to the reactions button on the desktop client, but not in every version because I have it different places on a couple of different theaters here. Previously, you would click on participants and then you would open the participants list and it would be down the bottom. It's no longer there on on this client. I have to click reactions and then there's a raise hand button at the bottom of the list of reaction icons.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I think on mobile. There's like a three dots menu and it's in there, although there might be reactions there too.
Me under participants, so.
Yeah, there may be, you know, testing where they provide updates to some clients and not others. So there may be inconsistencies until they merge their version numbers. Incidentally, even though Borough Council isn't here to begin the meeting yet, we are recording and streaming, just so everybody knows. From the Borough Morrisville Council Hall. So they'll be with us shortly. They're just in executive session. And I'm going to go ahead and start the live stream over here. So in case anyone missed that, Borough Council will be with us in a few minutes. They're just finishing an executive session.
Terry, can you hear me?
Yes, Terry.
Okay. Starting to join.
Okay, we have begun recording a stream, just so you know.
Okay. All right, I can't see if everybody's here.
I think everyone's still finishing up connecting Ted. I see everyone's name or picture. Just a couple more seconds before they're connected.
Okay, I'll give it a few more minutes.
You're more active.
Yeah.
We need that too, you know what I mean? Yeah.
You know, I had a question for you. So my house is similar to your house. Now there's the kitchens here and the dining room.
Right.
I don't have this hallway going through my. But you knocked this wall down to make the dining room and the kitchen.
Oh, what?
Did you ever think of knocking this wall down?
I did, but I wanted.
Why didn't she want it?
She just didn't want that whole, all that openness.
Yeah, that's what I don't want. And I think this is a load bearing wall in my house.
It could be.
And I have the air conditioning right above that, so I don't really.
Right.
I mean, I know they can do stuff and it doesn't hurt the house, but it's probably better not to.
Right.
Screw the things.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't want to sit here in the living room looking at the dishes. I don't mind if you're dining.
Right, yes. This is part of the.
Yeah. So then I had somebody come and I have my back here. And I have double windows, just like you do.
Right.
All right, I think, I think everyone here. We're gonna call this meeting to order. We were late coming to this meeting because of an executive session before this for personnel. According to order, the February, Tuesday, February 16th meeting of the Borough of Morrisville Council. Can we please rise for a moment of silence in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Yeah. Yay, Morrison.
We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Ravella? I'm sorry, Mayor Ravella? Councilman Bowers?
Here.
Helen Halaho?
Here.
Dwayne Nickel?
Here.
Sorry, Councilman Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
Councilman Jaeger?
Here.
Our borough solicitors here, Randy and Scott, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, just one addition to the agenda. I want to put it there now before we get to public comment. There will be one action item and that will be to affirm Micah Heinz as the, to continue in the acting Borough Manager position until we complete the hiring. All right, we have some presentations tonight. 4A is an update on the comprehensive plan.
Hi, my name is Bern Aaron. Am I able to share my screen so that I can? Share a PowerPoint presentation?
I believe you can.
Just give me one second. I believe I have to allow that. Okay, I'll see if you have the option now.
All right, yep, here we go. Um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, everyone sees the screen?
Yes.
All right, so tonight we're giving a presentation on the Morrisville Borough Comprehensive Plan Update. And we've been working with the Morrisville Planning Commission on this plan since 2019. So we're very excited to be at this point where we can, where the plan is up for an adoption vote. Just for time's sake, should be about a 15, 20 minute presentation. If everyone could put themselves on mute and we can just hold all questions in comment until the end, that'd be greatly appreciated. So starting out, just what is a comprehensive plan? It's a municipality's main policy document that summarizes planning and development issues. It's a statement of future goals and a vision for the community and it's an aid to land use planning and decision making. As per the MPC, municipalities should update their comp plan every 10 years. And this plan fulfills these following, or sorry, this plan fulfills the requirements of the MPC and addresses the following community planning issues. So our planning process, we met with the Borough Council in August 2019 to discuss the plans process and agree on content and direction. 11 meetings have been held thus far, all of which were open to the public. And meetings were always advertised on the borough's website and meetings, meeting minutes are available for review. As part of the public process, a resident survey was conducted in January 2020. And a full draft plan was posted on the Borough website in October 2020. A meeting was held last December in order to receive public comments regarding the draft and changes were made to that October 2020 draft based on feedback from the public. All council members should have picked up their copy of the February 2021 draft and we will review the changes that were made to that draft at the end of this presentation. The anonymous survey was posted to the Borough website in January 2020 and was circulated around various social media pages. It was answered by over 350 borough households and the purpose was to hear from as many residents as possible. Those views were then considered in the development of this plan. Along with multiple choice questions, there were a handful of open ended questions asked. Do you plan on retiring in Morrisville? How would you rate the quality of life? Do you have any other comments? And the answers from these questions were then formed into a word cloud. Which is a text analysis tool that shows the representation of words based on frequency and relevance. So several themes emerged from this word cloud. Importance of family, children and home. Worries regarding crime and quality of life issues. Frustration with high taxes and the school district. Desire to improve the borough's physical and economic structure. Satisfaction with the people of Morrisville and the borough sense of a small town community. So each of these themes influence the principles and recommendations of this plan. It was crucial that the opinions of the community members are being addressed and that the vision of the plan reflects those hopes and desires of the public. So the plan is organized into the following five principles. Livability, heritage, equity, mobility and resilience. What follows is a list of activities that is crucial to the plan's success. It is the plan's 10 core recommendations. A comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance, redevelop and reuse vacant and underutilized parcels. Review zoning standards along Trenton Avenue and Bridge Street. Pursue grant funding to implement physical improvements. Encourage non-residential development and redevelopment. Establish a public riverwalk, complete the Levy reaccreditation. Adopt the Morrisville downtown blueprint for the future plan. Preserve neighborhood integrity and publicize on the borough's opportunities and strengths. So now we will begin to summarize each chapter of the plan. Regional character. So Morrisville is located on the eastern border of Bucks on the Delaware River opposite of Trenton. Borough has a genuine small town feel and a compact downtown district. This is our first map of existing land use. Population characteristics. So basic demographic measures of population can provide a sense of the key characteristics of the community and an indication of where it's headed. Morrisville's population peaked in 1970 and has the second largest population among lower Bucks boroughs. The median household income has been rising and educational attainment has significantly increased. Housing. So the state of the housing stock greatly impacts all facets of life in the borough. Especially the quality of life and economic health. The most predominant housing in the borough is single family detached housing with homes built before 1940. The homeownership rate is 61% and nearly half of survey respondents chose to live here because of the cost of living. And addressing neighborhood quality of life issues were noted among some of the most important out of all survey respondents. And here is the zoning map that we have in the plan. Natural resources serve not only to help maintain the character of a place and enhance the quality of life, but understanding their importance is also crucial for helping guide land use planning and future development decisions. So this character provides an inventory, or sorry, this chapter provides an inventory of the existing important natural resources in the borough that should be protected and regulated, including wetlands, flood plains, trees, as well as other topics of environmental concern for an urbanized municipality such as air quality and water quality. And here is our natural resources map. Economic and non-residential activity. This chapter analyzes commercial and industrial activity in Morrisville Borough as well as the employment characteristics of the borough residents. And understanding the strengths and weaknesses of the borough's non-residential land use base is important for making policies decisions as they relate to zoning infrastructure. So we concluded that commercial development is focused along the riverfront, office development is limited. And the borough is no longer an important center of industrial activity like it once was. And the boundaries of the certified redevelopment area were expanded in 2019. And survey respondents noted that basic infrastructure was failing and in need of upgrades. Community services and facilities. These are necessary to maintain the public health, safety and welfare of the community and help to provide for the quality of life expected in Morrisville Borough. So the Borough Administration coordinates the daily operations of Borough Government. Public Works Department is responsible for the maintenance of the borough's property. The borough is a gateway between two states via three bridges. And survey respondents noted that they are unhappy with high real estate taxes and the quality of education within the schools. And here is our community services and facilities map. The next chapter reviews parks, recreation and open space. These resources are an important part of a community's identity and overall quality of life. Open space contributes to the borough's small town character, preserves the natural ecosystems upon which we depend and provides an attractive setting in which to live and work. Park and recreation facilities provide an avenue for residents to interact and to help create a sense of community. Park and recreation resources are an underlying strength of Morrisville and should be a key component of future revitalization efforts. So the 2008 Borough of Morrisville Open Space Plan accomplished several planned goals which are highlighted in this chapter. And the borough actually has the most acreage of parkland amongst surrounding lower Bucks boroughs. Here is the Parks Recreation Open Space Map that we have created. Historic preservation is inherently sustainable activity that maximizes the use of existing materials and infrastructure. By preserving historic structures, we are able to share the various spaces and environments in which generations before us have lived. The borough contains resources listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And has a couple listed on the National Historic Landmarks. The borough also has a historic society that seeks to preserve the heritage of the area. Our historic and cultural resources map. Next chapter that we talk about is transportation and circulation. The function of a transportation system is to provide for the movement of people and goods between places. The adequacy of the systems influenced by the type and size of population growth and land development that occurs along the network. So proper land use planning is critical to prevent adverse effects to the transportation network due to improper development. So we have SEPTA that provides public transportation to borough residents. We have the Calhoun Street Bridge, Lower Trenton, the Trenton Makes Bridge and the Morrisville Trenton Bridge, which are operated by the Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge Commission and are currently operating at capacity conditions. Traffic calming measures increase the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists and walkable and bikeable communities support sustainable urban environments. According to the community survey, the majority of residents use a car for their commute to work and also to get around outside of work. And the Calhoun Street Bridge also accommodates Morrisville's portion of the East Coast Greenway. The coordination of water resources, wastewater facilities and land use planning is a vital component to the comprehensive plan. And each is a part of the borough's interrelated water system. Water and wastewater facilities are key factors in determining the location, nature and density of future development. The wastewater treatment plant in Morrisville serves around 40,000 residents. And green stormwater infrastructure can reduce runoff caused by impervious surfaces. And survey respondents noted that flooding in some neighborhoods has become an issue. Solid waste management can be described as the process of providing an economically and environmentally sound means of storing, collecting, transporting, processing and disposing of waste and recyclable materials. This is a chart of recyclable materials that were diverted from the waste stream by borough residents and borough businesses. Contamination of the recycling stream with non-recyclable materials has become a growing issue and 38% of the waste stream is food and yard waste. The next chapter that we talk about is hazard mitigation. And hazard mitigation planning is integral to a community as it addresses both natural hazards and those caused by human activity. Stakeholders such as emergency management personnel, elected officials, businesses, institutions and local historical environmental organizations collaborate to support efforts that will minimize risks to life and property. So hazardous incidents and disasters can stretch local resources and budgets, but with pre-disaster mitigation actions taken in advance of a hazardous event, it's essential in breaking the disaster cycle of damage. With careful selection, pre-plan mitigation actions. That can be cost effective means of reducing the risk of loss. So here we have the borough's highest risks and moderately ranked risks. And especially with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, a lot of lessons can be taken and we discuss that in this chapter. So sustainability is the achievement of meeting the needs of the present generation while protecting resources of future generation. Sustainability recognizes that natural resources and systems are essential to providing both economic benefits and improving the quality of life. And three categories can be implemented at the municipal level that can increase energy conservation. And those are transportation, municipal government operations and building and development. And the goal of the borough's energy policy should be to assure and enhance near and long-term quality of life for all current and future residents. So this is the part of the plan where we go over the accomplishments that the borough has achieved since the 2008 comprehensive plan was adopted. The Morrisville Borough 2008 complan outlined several goals and objectives and highlighted four main implementation priorities. Those were to adopt farm-based zoning, continue bridge street revitalization efforts. Initiate a comprehensive maintenance, property maintenance program. And to restore and enhance the riverfront. So a common theme throughout the 2008 Complan was the need to revitalize the downtown and to make it a focus of future economic development efforts. Morrisville's Downtown: A Blueprint for the Future Plan provides the borough and its residents with an outline of success for the downtown. And the biggest recommendation to stem from that blueprint was to enact a new zoning district in Morrisville's downtown. And in 2019, the Borough Council adopted the proposal to amend the C1 Central Commercial District, while this was not necessarily form-based and implements the vision set forth in the blueprint for the future. So that is one of the big accomplishments that we talk about in this plan. And to complement the idea of form-based zoning, the borough set out to continue revitalization efforts along Bridge Street. Since the 2008 Plan, the borough approved resolutions to authorize the establishment of Lourdes in Morrisville. The boundaries of the certified redevelopment area were expanded to expand the enterprise zones to include additional parcels along Bridge Street. Renaissance Plaza was constructed, a mixed-use building along Bridge Street, which captures the traditional Measorby factories of Morrisville's Old Seal Town. Lehigh Rubber has been redeveloped and will have several tenants. And the borough received grants to complete a design project that would eliminate the gap in the towpath crossing at the Bridge Street. And lastly, we talk about some physical improvements that the borough has seen. Paving program, traffic signal updates, ADA improvements, lighting, and landscaping. The 2008 Complan recommended that the borough review Safety Code provisions to ensure maintenance issues were being addressed. And the enactment and enforcement of Property Maintenance Code standards for rental and owner-occupied housing is a key method to maintaining property values, sound buildings, and attractive neighborhoods. So the goal of the code enforcement is to remedy housing problems and ensure that issues are addressed. And Morrisville's Code Inspection Program has been successful in educating owners and maintaining housing quality. So one of Morrisville's most valuable assets is its riverfront location. And the goal in 2008 was for the borough to further protect and enhance this resource as well as promote a riverfront identity. The Tate and Lyle site was rezoned for Riverview Neighborhood with the intention of promoting mixed-use development along the river at its vacant and underutilized location. Williamson Park is also currently a topic of discussion for the Town Center concept. So those are some of the certified redevelopment areas. The borough has started the Levy Recertification as a result of flood mitigation efforts. And in 2010, the Riverfront Preserve was rezoned to natural lands and community service districts and was preserved as open space. Other accomplishments that the borough has seen that were not necessarily talked about in the four implementation priorities were Patriot's Park being constructed in place of Emma Ryder as a passive park designed to enhance historic summer seat. Playground improvements were made. And the Friends of Morrisville Dog Park was created. So the main purpose of the Complan is to set out a vision of the future of a community and to provide a physical plan for realizing this vision. The Future Land Use Plan from Morrisville Borough provides a framework for planning for the future. And the plan is based on the borough's existing mix of development, zoning district, land use patterns, and its base of historic, cultural, and natural resources. So our final map, the following map that you see, outlines the four major planning areas within the borough. The Riverfront Planning Area, the Residential North Planning Area, the Downtown Planning Area, and the Residential South Planning Area. And in the plan, we highlight the opportunities and strengths of each area as well as recommendations for each area. So our next steps. The Morrisville Borough Planning Commission recommended the document to Borough Council. And a few minor changes were made, which the Borough Planning Commission has approved. And those have been made to the February 2021 draft. So the adoption of plan now needs a majority vote from members of Borough Council. And that is the step that we are on currently. So that concludes our presentation of the Morrisville Comprehensive Plan Update. And we, I don't know. So the February 2021 Comprehensive Plan Update, like I just talked about, had a few changes that we made based on our public meeting in December. So if you'd like at this time, I can review those changes. I can bring up the PDF and kind of go through each change that we made and maybe discuss why we made them and then see if there's any public questions.
Would you?
Yeah. Let me share my screen again. Everyone sees this? So, okay, great. So what follows here is a comprehensive list of edits made to the October 2020 draft. So that was the draft that was posted to the Morrisville Borough website for public review. So based on the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission review of the document and the comments that were received at our December 14, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, we've made the following changes. A lot of them can be editorial, some of them are content changes. So obviously replacing the date to our current month. Adding Michael Jaeger and Dave Rabella. And just some grammar changes, adding Borough to Morrisville Borough and Morrisville Planning Commission. Page two, I'm not sure if you have your plan with you, if you want to flip through with me. But this came from a recommendation when we discussed the plan at our December meeting. And on page two, we just talked about some of the parks and recreation land uses. And we wanted to add the Riverfront Preserve into that group. We made a change on the first map, the existing land use to change all riverfront preserve parcels to Parks, Recreation, and Protected Open Space. Also just another editorial change, mining and manufacturing to industrial. A topic of the public meeting, we had a few comments of the public that wanted to see some more information about the Morrisville Little League. So we had agreed to add in just a couple sentences about the Little League and kind of its history under page five, which kind of delves into the borough's history. Page six, we wanted to clarify that under 21st century happenings, that the beautification committee was the Parks and Open Space Beautification Committee. And there are also some issues with pulling out, kind of highlighting certain tenants in the Lehigh Rubber redevelopment. So we just decided to keep it vague and just say, as of 2020, the building has several tenants. Map two, there were some zoning changes that need to be made. We changed the designation of these parcels, which I believe were some in the Riverfront Preserve. A couple parcels adjacent to the Riverfront Preserve as well. And that was per ordinance number 983. And someone from the public at our last meeting had thought that these zoning changes had been made yet. So they sent the ordinance to me, and then I corrected those changes. Page 28, we added that tree vitalized requires the borough's commitment to water and maintain any street or shade trees that are planted throughout the borough. Page 30 in Chapter Three, Housing, this was actually done by the BCPC staff when we did an internal review of the plan. This actually happened after the 2020 Planning Commission meeting, just to be consistent with chapter narrative, we just removed the Consumer Credit Center. Moving on to Chapter Four. So it came to my attention at the public meeting that the tidal shores at Welcome Park may have just been narrative from previous plans that kept getting regurgitated and putting into current plans. So we reworded this because apparently it's not called the tidal shores at Welcome Park. So we just reworded it to say that the natural tidal area provides access to the upper end of the Delaware Estuary and marks the upstream limit of the tide in the river. We also edited map three a bit more to show the woodlands along the Riverfront Preserve. Similarly, as the comment before, we removed any tenants that named any certain tenants in the Lehigh River Building, just to keep it more vague and say several tenants, just because we didn't want to show favoritism towards any certain tenants. We also just restructured a couple things, just to say that Patriots Park was developed after the borough acquired and demolished Emma Ryder Elementary School using a grant received from the Greenway Trail Recreation Program. I think in the previous draft, we hadn't clarified that it was developed after the elementary school was acquired and demolished. Just some editorial, making sure everything says Morrisville Borough. Page 67. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and some of the comments received from the public meeting, we wanted to add how parks and recreation usage had proved to be very significant, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic and accompanying lockdowns. And that's in the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space chapter. Including in Goal Number Three, Accomplishments, page 68, including tree planting and seedlings that came from our public comments. Adding the annual, the ongoing annual community-led riverfront cleanup, which is hosted by the Morrisville Environmental Advisory Council. We added the tree plantings at Williamson Park, Borough Hall, Manor Park Playground, and the open space parcel at Delmore and Philadelphia Avenues. We added educational signage that was installed at the Morrisville Riverfront Preserve as well as guided nature walks and educational efforts at the Morrisville Riverfront Preserve. On page 75, this was reworded to say that the borough owns the 2.1 acre parcel at the intersection of Delmore and Philadelphia Avenues, one acre of which is leased by the Friends of Morrisville Dog Park. And the remaining 1.1 acres is municipal open space with a view of the river. So this was just a discrepancy in who had owned the parcel and where the Friends of Morrisville Dog Parcel was. And these are just some editorial things that we made. Map number five. We made an edit there to label the Dog Park as half of the parcel and then municipal open space as the rest of the parcel. We made some changes, the Manor Park Playground parcel took over the entire Cloverleaf property. So we had to change that to show its actual size. Page 80, under Recommendations, we added to explore opportunities for helping realize the goal for establishing a continuous public riverwalk and trail along the Delaware River. Page 108, this is another edit that we made after the December 2020 Planning Commission, as it just presented some contradictory information. We just removed, which will meet unfunded EP mandate. Some more editorial, township businesses should be borough businesses. More editorial, just clarifying that the beautification committee is the Parks and Open Space Beautification Committee. And something that came from our public comment was to point out that the borough contributes to park maintenance by regularly mowing the grass and picking up the trash and recycling at the Morrisville Dog Park. And on our implementation tables, which shows the recommendations from each chapter, we stayed consistent when we made a change. We had to make it in the implementation tables. So for natural resources, we added that the borough should ensure budgeting for tree plantings and watering, which is something that we changed earlier, as well as explore opportunities for helping realize a public riverwalk and trail along the Delaware River. And that concludes all the changes. Like you can see, most of them are just minor content changes that came from public meeting comments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
I have one. There still are some changes that need to be made to the planned errors, little omissions. Who is responsible for making them and how do we get it to those people to have the changes made?
The County Planning Commission will be responsible.
Okay, not the Morrisville Planning Commission.
No, Bucks County Planning Commission. If you want to send us the changes that would be made and we can, if they're just grammar issues and there's no content changes, then we can go ahead and make those.
Well, we got an email tonight and I didn't get a chance to study it. But one of the residents sent a whole list of things that she said that there's issues with. She said the sewer plant is labeled as transportation in map number one, map number two. Then more than this parcel across from Greystone, is that really CS2? So she has a whole list here, but I had a few myself, so. Could you give an email address where we could send it to?
Right. Yeah, I can give you my email address. It is ekeerr@buxcounty.org.
What we can do is we can take a look at those changes. I know, for example, the sewer plant is probably labeled transportation because that's the land use code that we use, transportation and utility. But we can, you know, anything that is a factual change, we can definitely make that change. Anything that we find is a little bit different, we'll respond to that as well. But anything that, you know, you're really not changing the major recommendations, specifically the land use map, we can go ahead and make that change and the plan can still be adopted.
Okay.
We weren't taking action tonight because it just got posted, so. Okay. Anyone else in council? All right. Anybody from the public who would like to say something briefly?
Would you like me to call on individuals?
Yeah, I mean, if they have something, it has to be brief. We're behind schedule in the meeting as it is.
Okay, so we have five people with their hands up. I'm not sure if they all wanted to comment on this, but we'll go ahead and start. Mary Frienda? You'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, all right. Hi, I'm Mary Frienda, and I live at 343 Crown Street. I'm also raising my hand for my husband, Don Rice, who wants to follow me in making a comment. And I have a few things to.
This is just, excuse me, Mary. This is just to ask questions about the presentation. This isn't public comment yet. So if you have a question about the presentation of the comprehensive plan?
I do, yes.
All right, we got to keep them brief though, because public comment is after this. So I'm just opening it up very quickly.
I didn't understand. Okay. The presentation said twice on, well, the once on page 57, that commercial development is concentrated on the riverfront, which as everybody that lives in Morrisville knows is totally incorrect. We have no commercial development on the waterfront that I ever saw. And I don't think anybody else in the borough either did. So I think that needs to be changed. and I don't think anybody else in the borough either did. So I think that needs to be changed.
Okay, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. All right, Terry, next person with their hand up.
Jackie, if you could unmute yourself.
Um, yeah, so I was having trouble following it because everything sounded like good and like you wanted to preserve space, but it seemed like you.
Excuse me, excuse me, you have to have a name and address.
My name's Jackie and my address is 36th Union Street.
Do you have the last name?
Carol.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I heard though, and one of, something mentioned that Williamson Park is considered underutilized, which I think you also said that underutilized land can be redeveloped. Is that correct? Are you planning on redeveloping Williamson Park?
Yeah, I think, I think the context of underutilized might have been, or actually, I don't think we said that. I think we said it was well-used during the pandemic. As far as the redevelopment of the, of the park, that's not something that this comprehensive plan is tackling. We're noting it because, you know, a proposal was put before council. But I think that that's an issue that is really kind of beyond what the comprehensive plan could say anything about. And we were sort of more or less leaving it to council to evaluate the merits of that proposal.
All right. Anything else you'd like to ask the planning commission? Okay, Terry, who else has their hand raised?
Joshua, unmute yourself.
My hand was raised initially in the intention of, for the public comment, not commenting on the proposal.
Yeah, this is just about the proposal. We haven't opened up public comment yet.
Yes, I'm aware. I'll just clarify.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Next would be Steve Fowler.
Hi, this is Stephen Fowler, 444 Hillside Avenue here in Morrisville. My biggest problem with the comprehensive plan concerns the hazard mitigation in table forty-three. I need you to take a second look at, at that. One of the hazards is given as earthquake, and there's no way that you could have as an earthquake hazard to a daycare facility on Harper Avenue and have no earthquake hazard to the fire department, which is located two blocks from that particular location. If you're going to have earthquake listed as a hazard, then the entire town should be covered. So all of those facilities that are listed on table forty-three on page one eighteen need to be entered as yes for the hazard being for each of those facilities. The other item concerns a rail hazard. I do not see how a facility on Hillcrest Avenue would have, be in a hazard area for a rail line, which doesn't pass anywhere near Hillcrest Avenue. So again, that whole, that whole section of the table needs to be revisited. The other one that I had a problem was, was airport as a hazard, so that we are on a flight plan for Trenton Mercer Airport. And so every facility that is listed in that table should have yes in that particular column, because we, it affects all of us in the town and it also affects those facilities. So that needs to be revisited. Then I had some other items on one fifteen and one twenty-one. On those two particular pages were grammatical errors, where you have flood, comma, flash, comma, flood, and ice jam. So is it flood, flash, flood, and ice jam? If you could take a look at that, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else you'd like to ask a question of the commission, if they have their hand raised for that?
Debra Colgan?
No, I'll, I'll reserve mine for public comment.
Okay, thanks. I believe that's it at the moment.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a real pleasure working with the borough again.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to four B, which is the Comprehensive Annual Grant Program Report for 2021. All right, I should have screen share functionality? Terry, can you make that happen?
Yep. Mr. Helder, you should be able to share your screen now.
Yep.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Kurt Schroeder with Gilmore and Associates, and Wade Helder is on. He's going to operate the presentation and, and could jump in at any time if there's any questions. I'll probably run through the slides and then, similar to the comprehensive plan, if there's any questions, we can address them at the end. But I'll try to be brief. This presentation is one that we've given the past several years around this time of year, and it accomplishes, looking back at what has been done in the year prior, it talks about what's happening in the current year and then a look ahead at planning for the following year. So we'll go to our first slide. And this is just a simple pie chart that shows a breakdown of the costs in 2020 borne by our company as the engineering firm for the borough. And there are three different components. We broke it down into the, the land development and other reimbursables. Those would be pass-through costs. They would be, somebody is applying to do business in the borough, and they would then cover the costs that would be incurred for our company to do the review. And that makes up four percent of the total costs. The grant funding and liquid fuels category of, which is fifty percent of the costs, those are actually of the Gilmore fees. Half of those costs are covered by the grant funds that are acquired through the grant applications. And then forty-six percent of our total costs are what we call borough funds or out-of-pocket. So this would be actual local Marcell Borough Funds that's, that's through the budget that's put together each year. So we'll go to the next slide.
Hold on. Oh, there we go.
Okay, so breaking down this chart further, looking at the borough funds, the out-of-pocket category that we described, we break that down into another four categories. The purple is ten percent. That's for the MS4. That's that ongoing DEP Stormwater Management permit process that each year we have an obligation to submit and show progress in that program. So that ten percent figure, that's funds that we have not been able to find any outside fund sources to cover. The green shows the design and bid of grant-funded construction projects. So we may find funding through a grant program to cover construction costs, but there may be a component that requires us to put that project together, put it out to bid. That represents fifteen percent of the borough's out-of-pocket costs. The red, general engineering, that's sort of like this catch-all bucket that would be just general duties that we encounter throughout the year, whether it be working with the staff, the public works, responding to issues that arise from time to time, general correspondence, things like that. That, that represents thirty-five percent of the borough's out-of-pocket costs. And then forty-one percent of our efforts, again, that comes out of the local dollars, that goes towards the actual grant applications themselves, putting together the applications and submitting them to the various grant programs. Jumping to the next slide here, this is just more of a breakdown of those four pie chart items that we just went through. The grant applications, we, in that bucket, we did eleven applications in 2020. They averaged approximately $5,000, which is right around what we tend to budget to municipalities to complete a competitive grant application. Of those eleven, we, we received three awards, which is terrific. That's a pretty good, pretty good batting average. And we still have four of those applications pending. So sometimes you make the application in 2020, you won't hear about whether they get awarded in 2021. And we all know how goofy 2021 has been, or 2020 was. So some things got actually delayed and deferred a little bit longer than we would have otherwise perhaps seen. And then of the eleven applications, we did receive notice that four of those were declined. That happens. It happens routinely, and sometimes it positions us with an ability to reapply in a subsequent grant fund round. Usually they come out annually. Again, we talked about the general engineering, residential correspondences, engineering reporting and management, miscellaneous public improvements, and general correspondence and communication with, with borough staff and residents and so forth. The design and bid grant-funded projects, breaking that item down, you know, that included the bidding of the Melvin Avenue Basin Project. That's for that MS4 obligation. We did bid that in 2020. We will bid that again in 2021, and I can break that down a little bit further in the presentation as to why. The 2020 road paving project, you know, that was putting that package together and putting that out to bid, the annual road paving work that's done. And then fifteen percent of the design of the Patriots Park project. So we did get a DCD grant, which covered eighty-five percent of the total cost, but there's a local match requirement of fifteen percent. And so that is a substantial amount of that, of that funding that was supplied. And then fifteen percent also for the levy study that we're working on. Again, DCD covered eighty-five percent of that, but there is that local requirement. And that's money that's set aside, you know, when we receive a grant, we'll notify the borough and the borough will make sure in the budget for the following year, that funding is in place. And then again, that MS4 Stormwater Program, that's a PADEP requirement, and it has annual reporting. So while there might be projects that are required to be done, and we do pursue those projects through grants, there's an ongoing annual reporting process that occurs, and that costs a little bit of money to put together. So just a quick review of where the grants are, you know, these are a list of what we refer to as the pre-2020 grants. So these are ones that, that have been in the works maybe for a number of years or maybe from the year prior. The first one, that's that Bridge Street Obstruction Project, we refer to it as, but it's that crossing of the canal across Bridge Street. You know, that money has been in place for a number of years. The construction is secured in the amount of $870,000. There's also design money that, that has come in through other grant funding. Pennsylvania Environmental Council is really behind that and is, is helping to push that along. Melvin Avenue Basin retrofit, that's that MS4 project we talked about. We had received 187,000 approximate dollars, and it did require that fifteen percent DCD local match. DCD also funded the design of Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat. $85,000 was funded for that fifteen percent match. The Williamson Park Master Plan, so that was one we received in last year for $50,000. It does require a fifty percent match, which I believe is, it's more, maybe more like a hundred percent match. It's another $50,000 out-of-pocket. We sort of tabled that last year for a number of reasons. COVID obviously, you know, impacted. Everyone was uncertain about, you know, local funding and financials. So we tabled it for that reason, and also because there is that pending project that's being considered on Williamson Park. So we thought it would be prudent to delay that project, and we've continued to get that project extended. So the funding's still in place for if and when the borough decides to move forward with that study. The next one, number five, is the Automatic Red Light Enforcement Grant. That was a $20,000 grant that was funded, and that's to replace all the regulatory signs. We're working with Public Works Director John Leder in starting to spend down that money to start replacing some of the street signs, speed limit signs, things like that. We hope to do all the signs in the borough with that funding in place and through the efforts of Public Works, which will be the required match funding for that. The DCD, number six, the flood study, that's progressing very well. We did receive $255,000 for that. It did have a fifteen percent local match, which was out-of-pocket. And that is to try to gain accreditation for the, for the levy. And I could talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. Finally, number seven, yes.
I noticed that you write down what the funding dollar amounts, and all you write is out-of-pocket fifteen percent. Is there a way you could go back and fill that in and let us know what that out-of-pocket dollar actually is?
Sure. We can do that. So, yeah, and it truly is, it's fifteen percent of, of that dollar figure. But we can go back and put that, broke that broken down into this presentation going forward. Number seven is the Keystone Grant Program, which we, we secured fifty-two percent, or $52,000 to replace the library roof. And actually, we've had good fortune recently in securing, it has a fifty percent match requirement, but oftentimes we try to find another grant fund to match funding that's received. And we were able to secure, we applied for the CDBG grant through the county, and the county graciously did award that. So we're hopeful that we can get that project out to bid this year and get that roof replaced without any out-of-pocket costs to the borough.
Kurt, it's Mike. Can I interrupt for just one quick second to address that? Ms. Halal, if you look at your packet every month, that actual dollar amount is on the spreadsheet that they provide us, just so you know, because it is, it is monthly reported to us as, as a council.
I'm aware. I want it in the presentation, though.
Okay.
So just grants in summary.
Excuse me, Kurt.
Yes.
Kurt, I have a, I have a question about the Melvin Court. It says 187,000. I was going to ask about other monies, and I see on this page, it's actually, there is, it shows the other 122.
That's correct.
But my question is, in a comprehensive plan, in our comprehensive, in the comprehensive plan, it mentions the 187, but doesn't mention the 122. Should we add that to our comp plan? Does, and I know that we're kind of meshing here, but just, that's a question for, I guess, council to decide too, whether that should be part of the CP.
We could reach out to the county and ask if they think that would be appropriate to do so. I mean, this is a continuum thing, so, you know, by the time we revise the comp plan, we may have new news that keeps updating it. But we can talk to.
That, that's true. But since it does have the other funding, I thought maybe they both should be included. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that's a good point. So, yeah, so this, this is the, so these are the 2020 grant. And the first one there, that's through PennDOT's Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Program. And this was a grant to upgrade the traffic signal at Pennsylvania and Trenton Avenue. We did receive $227,000. It does require a thirty percent match. And in this particular application, which is not uncommon, I believe we asked for upwards of $350,000 in an effort to try to cover the entire cost. We did not receive the full amount requested. We did receive the $227,000, which is great. So we're actually hoping that we can secure some additional funding to try to cover the total costs to the borough. So that project's not really advancing at the moment while we're trying to secure more funds, but we will be advancing it if, when needed, and we'll talk to your staff about budgeting appropriately for that going forward. Number two, that is that Basin Avenue, Melvin Avenue Basin retrofit. And we did receive an additional $122,000, Nancy, as you appropriately pointed out. And that was because when we put the project together, we had assumed a construction budget prior to doing the design. We put the project out to bid. We only received one bid, which is never a good thing. We want to get bidding participation on these projects to get competitive numbers. Price came in substantially higher than the funding we had in place. So we did not proceed with awarding that project. We went back and sought to secure additional funds, and we were able to receive this funding. So we're going to repackage that project and put that out to bid this spring with construction this summer. And then, you know, we'll get all the grass to grow in, in the fall, and hopefully that project's then completed, and that'll meet our MS4 obligation, which is a which is a very substantial cost, as you see, um, that's required to be done within a five-year period of our permit cycle. Uh, so hopefully, fingers crossed, that goes forward and that'll be a, a tremendous accomplishment for the borough to satisfy their MS four, uh, without any, uh, out of pocket costs incurred. A lot of municipalities are struggling with that, uh, throughout the county and throughout the state. Number three there, that's that CDBG grant application. That's going to be the, the remainder of the funding needed to replace the roof for the library. We hope to put that out to bid in the next few weeks or so. Um, or, or maybe it might take us a little bit longer, uh, than we'd originally planned, uh, for, for unforeseeable circumstances. But, uh, that project's going to be done this year also. Uh, number four is, uh, CDBG grant funding, we received $125,000. Uh, and that is for the continuation of the ADA curb ramp upgrades. You know, as we pave roadways, we're required by law to upgrade the ADA curb ramps. And so while we're paving roads or right after we pave the roads, we're, we're constructing the curb ramps. So we're very grateful to receive that county. Uh, it's a county grant program. It's actually federal funding through CDBG, but that's a significant award that was received in 2020 and will be constructed this summer. Uh, number five, Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat. So this was, um, this was a, a great, uh, uh, set of news when we, when we received notice that the RACP program funded a half a million dollars towards the construction of Patriots Park. It is, uh, significantly less than what we asked for. But again, you know, having that money in hand really helps us to try to secure other match dollars. Um, if we can't secure other match dollars, we can use the real estate value as match for construction. So worst case scenario, we can put forth the $500,000 toward, towards the construction of a portion of the park. Uh, best case scenario, we can leverage this money to try to secure a greater amount of funds to perhaps construct the entire park. Uh, so that's in the works in 2020. So again, we had talked about, there were a few grants we hadn't heard back yet from in 2020. Uh, the first one there, that is, um, West Bridge Street Accessibility Improvement. Some of you may recall that there was a study done for accessibility pedestrian, uh, facilities throughout the borough. And West Bridge Street, there's a sidewalk gap. Uh, we applied for $280,000. Um, we actually requested a waiver from the state. Uh, that this program does allow you to request a waiver from a 30% match. So we're hoping that $280,000 could, um, cover the entire project if it's funded. Uh, also again, through the PennDOT Grant Program, the, uh, Pennsylvania Trenton Avenue Pedestrian Improvements, uh, that was requested for $150,000 and we're hopeful that we'll receive that. The DCD Grant Application for Manor Park, we're asking for $250,000 in funding. We think we can use a real estate value for the 15% required match. And that of course is to upgrade the playground equipment and, uh, some accessibility and parking for Manor Park. And finally, number four, uh, we've asked through DCD for, uh, $250,000 in funding to continue to cover the construction dollars needed to get Patriots Park, uh, constructed. And again, we're hoping to use real estate value for that match. So here are the projects that were completed in 2020. Again, a lot of this, as you saw earlier in the slides, were funded through these grants. But, um, the construction of Historic Summer Seat Accessibility Improvements, we did complete the construction of the entire perimeter around what will be Patriots Park, what, what surrounds the Summer Seat, uh, property. So new sidewalk, new curb ramps, really looks sharp out there. It's a nice facility that the borough owns and maintains. So it's nice that that's been brought into a state of good repair. Uh, phase two of the levy study, we're about 80% completed with that. Um, that's again, trying to get the levy accredited with FEMA. We've had some very significant progress. We've had some very favorable results in, in the, the research that's been done. Uh, so we're very optimistic about hopefully closing that out and at least getting a conditional accreditation, uh, acknowledged by FEMA this year. And then hopefully, depending on how things progress with Williamson Park, hopefully getting that levy ultimately accredited with FEMA. Uh, third bullet here, design bid and construction for the 2020 road paving program. We were able to resurface Granville, Grandview Avenue, Melvin Avenue, Francis Avenue, Althea Avenue and Legion Street, uh, that, that, those roads turned out pretty good. Um, also the design bid and construction for the 2020 curb ramp program. Like I said, those are similar, uh, roads, similar intersections for the reasons that were required to replace the curb ramps while we resurfaced roadways. Um, so 80% of the design was completed for Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat. Uh, we did pause that design a little bit because we were uncertain how the project would go to construction, whether we'd have to phase it or whether we'd have to, um, you know, change up the plan set to, uh, to accommodate funding that's received. So once we get direction on how to take the first bite at that apple with getting the park constructed, we'll be, uh, advancing that design to completion. There's still some funding that's, that's in place for that. So, you know, again, we, we applied for the 11 grants and we won three and we still have four that are pending. So, uh, stay tuned on the results of those four. Um, so here's just a couple photos. This is the curb ramp program that was done in conjunction with the paving program. Here's the outcome of the curb and sidewalk accessibility improvements surrounding the Historic Summer Seat property. Uh, here's the concept drawing, the latest concept drawing there of Historic Summer Seat. Like I said, we have this substantially designed right now. We hope to wrap that up. And again, it's all about securing the funding. Uh, I think we have another slide here, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, no, it comes in later. Uh, but here's the 2020, uh, grants in summary. You know, we always look at how, how has this program, this grant, comprehensive grant program, this initiative that the borough has undertaken, how has this worked out for the borough? Is it a success? Is it a failure? Do we want to tweak the way that we approach these? And again, we're happy to report, we think this is a tremendous success for the borough. Basically, um, at the end of the day, in 2020, for every dollar that the borough invested in grant program, whether it be applying for the grants, whether it be to cover the match cost, and you see the significance of the projects, they're very important projects. Um, and we were happy to hear about a lot of those projects in the comprehensive plan, uh, presentation, which was terrific. It's a wonderful document that, that, uh, the borough's considering adopting here. Uh, but you can see that for every $1 that the borough spent out of pocket, the return on that investment was $8.67. So in 2020, a total in excess of a million dollars of outside funding was brought into Marcell Borough. Um, and that was the result of the investment of $124,000. So, yeah, it's a pretty good rate of return. Um, you can see the grant match total there in, uh, in, in the grants received was, was $68,000. So 6% of, um, of the grant total was, uh, out of pocket match monies. So a look ahead at 2021, you know, we still have some pending grant applications. As you know, we want to try to continue to pursue funding to get Manor Park's playground updated and get that, uh, parking lot resurfaced and some curb ramps and accessible routes. We have, um, CDBG application, uh, for that. Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat, again, always trying to find construction. That's a multimillion dollar, uh, project. And, uh, we're always trying to find more funding to match the funding that's already been put in place. For the levy construction, so we're hopeful that we can gain conditional accreditation with FEMA, meaning that they're going to tell us that all the analysis and reporting that we're submitting to them, that basically they'll find it acceptable conditioned upon us doing certain things. We've talked previously in presentations about the construction of a spillway north of the Calhoun Street Bridge. And we've talked about the creation of a pumping station that would actually take any water that accumulates behind the levy and put it back out into the Delaware River. Uh, we're actually hoping that we may not need to construct the pump station because the analysis shows that through the implementation of the spillway, only a very small floodplain will remain behind the levy. That's a very significant development. It's just come forth in the last, uh, few weeks or months that we're working on.
Uh, Kurt.
Uh, yes.
Excuse me, regarding the, uh, potential spillway. Um, now if, if there is one that's, um, constructed north of Calhoun, does that mean the one at, this is my understanding, this could be all rumor. Does that mean that the one at Maple no longer exists?
Highly unlikely. We are working carefully with DCNR. You know, that waste gate there at Maple is quite significant. It has significant historic value.
Okay.
In and out itself.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it kept if it can.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we're, we're corresponding between our, our, ourselves, our consultants and DCNR and FEMA, hoping that that waste gate can remain, that DCNR can essentially pledge that they will make sure that it remains closed to keep the water in the canal at all times when there's any predicted rain events and unless they have an absolute need to do maintenance to de-water their canal. Um, how that concludes is yet to be determined, but within the past week, that's been our correspondence and discussions with the various stakeholders. Um, next, next item here is traffic signal upgrades and replacements. We're always trying to find funding. We are securing, like I said, portions of that funding and we're hopeful that we can find opportunities to get those, uh, traffic signals in need upgraded, completed. And we're optimistic that, that there is funding in place and we'll be able to do that. Um, sidewalk connections and ADA ramps, you know, again, that goes back to that Walkworks plan that was done comprehensively for the borough. Uh, so we're always trying to fill in little connections and pedestrian, uh, features throughout the borough. And finally, you know, the Borough Hall has its own set of renovations that have been targeted, whether it be the roof, whether it be a complete overhaul of, of the entire facilities. But if we see an opportunity to grab big money for construction funds for that, uh, we're certainly keeping that in, in top priority here.
Kurt, one, one question about the roof. Uh, Scott Mitchell had commented that it's really a dire straits. So I'm, I'm hoping that that would be a priority.
For sure.
Rather than, you know, cosmetic renovations.
Yeah, the roof is certainly a, uh, high priority. And, you know, unfortunately, we got lucky with the library, but of course that's a very old historic building. So it really qualified better for that grant program. Um, usually a low interest loan is about as good as it gets for funding for stuff like that. RACP is a great fund source. Uh, we have applied for that in the past, but we can continue to lobby hard for that. And, and we need to talk to our, our, our state legislators who are, are very instrumental. They've always had Marshall Borough's back in these grants, but we can definitely lean on them and tell them, you know, we need that to be a priority for them as well.
Thank you.
Uh, 2021 grants to pursue here. If the CDBG grants come out this time of year, um, so I'm sure we'll be, uh, just questions on what to apply for, um, for that program. It's been a group program for the borough. It's federal funding. It covers engineering and construction costs. It has no match requirement. Uh, that said, unfortunately, this year, the county has, uh, created a policy to not cover engineering costs, uh, for that. So that's a significant change for us. We need to weigh those options. Um, because, you know, again, it was a no-brainer to go for these grant funds. It covered a lot of different projects. It matches really well with state funding. Uh, but to now have to cover, you know, 15, 20% of an application with a local match money. I know that's something that we've often had a hard time, um, overcoming just because there's really not a whole lot of, uh, excess local funds each year. Uh, but we will still get our recommendations in on whether, you know, to submit and, and we'll just have to decide, you know, as council, what, what makes the most sense here. Um, so DCD, great grant program, has a small match requirement of 15%, but you know, again, there has been some change, recent change in our policy. You can request a waiver, uh, from their secretary and, and we have done that. So we'll be targeting that program for a number of different things. DCNR is always a really good, uh, grant program, usually for parks and playgrounds and things. Um, the Automatic Red Light Enforcement, again, a really good program, no match required. That could be used for like traffic signals and, and think, and, and other transportation needs. Uh, PennDOT's Multimodal Transportation Fund, again, that's one for, uh, for various applications, but also traffic signals, green light go. Um, Keystone, that's the one that, you know, the library roof replaced. So, you know, we'll see if we can try to use that for the Borough Hall, but, um, we may not qualify. And we're always keeping our eyes and ears open. We're always talking to the legislators on, uh, if there's any other grant funds that are out there. So we'll bring them to you all as well as we hear about those throughout the year. Um, so here's the projects. We're hoping that finally, after many, many, many years, that the construction of this, uh, pedestrian linkage across the canal, across Bridge Street will be, uh, will be bid by PennDOT this year. We're hoping to finalize some things with their environmental unit and working with PEC to get this project over the finish line. Uh, here is a list of the targeted roads to be paved in 2021. So we're going to be putting that out to bid in the near future and Liquid Fuels funding will cover hopefully, uh, those roads labeled in red there. And you can see the history of the paving that's been done recently. Again, we talked about replacing the regulatory signs in the borough, working with, um, Public Works on getting that, that Arley money spent down. And then here's the, the levy accreditation, of course. We're, we're trying to close that, get a conditional approval this year for accreditation.
Excuse me, Kurt. Um, I don't remember seeing that map about the roads for 2021. Could you just, can you list them quickly? What, what's considered?
Yeah, Wade, can you go back to that and maybe can you read those roads off? Do you know them by heart?
Not by heart. Uh, I, I know Hillcrest is the priority road, um, to have done for 2021. And, uh, based off of, uh, what I believe is the Liquid Fuels budget is, uh, Hillcrest may be the only road to get done. Um, and I believe Philadelphia Avenue would be the, I guess, the secondary road and some, some of the smaller ones. But, uh, yeah, but I believe Hillcrest is going to be the target road and we'll, we'll see how much we can get done with the Liquid Fuel budget for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, again, here's that Williamson Master Plan that we got the, the planning grant in place, but we've paused that. And I think we'll continue to pause that as we see how the proposal for Williamson Park progresses. Um, the construction of Melvin Avenue Basin, we're very optimistic that, uh, this will be constructed in 2021. All the funding's in place for that. And again, that's a really good success story here to cover all those, um, MS four costs without any out of pocket. Um, so Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat, as we said, we received a half a million dollars with RACP funds. And we do not have any other funding for construction in place yet. We do have some pending applications. But perhaps, you know, if we can't secure other match funding, maybe we just parse out, um, the parking lot in the corner there highlighted in red and perhaps just construct that component uh, with a half a million that's in place currently. And as far as the half million goes, if that parking lot is $250,000, well, we'll probably add a $250,000 worth of infrastructure, stormwater management, piping and things, the things that get built first, you know, before the amenities get built, uh, after the fact. Uh, again, continuing to do the design bid and construction of the ADA curb ramps that's funded through CDBG through the county. Um, let's see, what else we've got here? Uh, replacement in Marcell's library roof, we're very, um, hopeful that we can get that project out to bid this spring with construction this summer. Again, two grants are in place to cover all those costs. So that wraps up our presentation. You know, we're, we're always excited to give this presentation. So that wraps up our presentation. You know, we're always excited to give this presentation every year. It's been it's been a great success and, you know, we're proud of the results and looking forward to keeping the pace and trying to keep getting these applications in, to keep winning these grant funds to cover these important projects.
Thank you.
Questions? No problem.
Any questions from anybody? Kurt, would you be able to do a recommendation on the grants that you think we have a good shot at getting and should apply for?
Yes, Ted, we absolutely need to do that, and we will do that. We'll get that in front of you as soon as we can to give
Okay.
as much advance notice before those are due throughout the year.
Okay.
For rents open.
All right. Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Terry Hudo.
We have one here that's written. So can we do that one first, the one that's gentleman's here? Can anyone else hear me or no?
I did.
We can do it.
Okay, we have one. Move on. So we'll start with this gentleman first.
Okay, I think you guys can all hear me now. Yes? Is that loud enough? Okay. Noel Sperry, five thirty-one Prospect Avenue, Morrisville. I'd like to speak about the Williamson Park Town Square project. With the recent tax increases, Morrisville property owners are paying some of the highest tax rates in Bucks County. These tax increases are not only an extra burden on homeowners, but on renters too. Whether they realize it or not, their rent goes up to cover the cost of these tax increases. It's been stated that the that the park is not utilized to its fullest potential, and it is currently costing the town precious tax dollars just to maintain it. And as I'm sure that the council can attest, there's no money in the budget for park improvements nor will there be in the near future. There are a few people in town that are loudly screaming, we're completely going to lose this park. That's absolutely not true. We're not going to lose the park. The plans for the park are to reduce its size, then redevelop it for the community. If you look at the plans, the sledding hill, the nineteen fifty-five Little League World Series Champions Field will be staying right where they are. In addition, the community will have a say in what we want in this new park. Already planned is a new amphitheater to replace the current stage. We could have a walking running course with static workout stations that incorporates access to the Levery River Walk. We can, we'll get, we can have new basketball and tennis courts, an additional playground to complement the existing tot lot. We can make sure there's ample lighting and security cameras for the safety of the community and park users, which will further help our police department keep crime out of town, all paid by the developer for us. Developer has money set aside to create a new green space to replace lost park space for a new state-of-the-art baseball complex to be used by the Morrisville Little League. In regards to the levy, the developer will need to cover the cost of recertifying it in order to move forward with this project. This recertification will help eliminate the extra flood insurance costs for property owners around the park. Finally, the increased usage by the new and existing residents will further help reduce criminal activity around the park. All in all, this is a huge win for Morrisville because improvements to our park, improvements to our community is not gentrification. It's making the town better for the people that live here. We get a new and improved park that is easier to maintain, a new state-of-the-art baseball complex. We eliminate the costly flood insurance by recertifying the levy, a new tax base to help our struggling budget, and this becomes a keystone to redevelopment of our Bridge Street Business District, all paid by the developer for Morrisville. Thank you.
Hi, Terry, it's your show.
Mary Herenda. You'll need to unmute again.
I'm doing this. Okay. Hi, Mary Herenda, still for the rest of the evening at least, three four three Crown Street. Okay, I have a comment on the on the, okay, on the, yes, revised comprehensive plan. In chapter seven, Parks, Recreation and Open Space, it says that parks, recreation and open space are important to the community's identity, sense of community, quality of life, and the parks and rec are underlying strengths of Morrisville. The open space one is to maintain existing open space, and the plan for the Williamson Park Town Square is basically to get rid of our largest piece of open space, the majority of our open space in Morris. On page seventy-three, they are the, is is basically what the gentleman just said in his comment, basically all these. It sounds like this is going to be great for recreation in Morrisville because the conceptual plan says that it will be a complete overhaul of existing recreational facilities. When we saw the last iteration of a conceptual plan, it involved removing all the ball fields except for that one Little League field. And as of now, he talks about the park being underutilized. But when you go down there, when they're playing ball, all those parks are utilized. And people are in the park. Every time we go down there, people, walking dogs, walking on the levee, playing basketball. And it says there'll be basket, there are supposed to be more basketball, pickleball, tennis ball courts. In the, and it's, there are none, there will be none of those, only that one Little League field. And that amphitheater is going to take up a lot of room and open space that people can't use to recreate. The fourth bulleted item on page seventy-three, it says five new ballparks will be built at Cloverleaf property. That's incorrect. That came out of the plan in the second iteration, and I actually asked her, asked Mr. McGrath's lawyer about it. He said, where will, where will those park, where will, where will those ball fields be? He didn't know. He just somewhere else. That was not a good answer, somewhere else. And so the last sentence of that, you know, that that Morrisville should consider its open space when going, considering new development opportunities is a very apt sentence. We really need to keep our park. It is part of this community. It is, you know, the first thing you see when you come to Morrisville. Anyways, the comprehensive plan needs, the comprehensive plan needs to be changed to take this page seventy-three section out about the Milton, Williamson Park Town Center development because it is false. We also need to keep our park and put our and Don, my husband, Don Rice, is going to speak second. Thank you.
I'll speak second if you okay with it. Is that acceptable if I make my public comment now?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't going to make a comment on this, but I was really disturbed in the last presentation by Gilmore that we saw that Gilmore Associates and they said, decided not to pursue the Williamson Park Master Plan at this time. I mean, if that is a Gilmore Associate decision, that's totally unacceptable. They are responsible to us as the public, not to unilaterally make a decision about Williamson Park. There is a public perception that the park is being intentionally
Neglected.
Neglected, yes, thank you, at this time. And to then, on top of that, say you're not going to do the Williamson Park Master Plan because you want to give McGrath a chance? That's wrong. That's just wrong on the face of it. So now let's go back to what I was going to talk about. Also, we just heard that Gilmore said Phase Two study of the levy was eighty percent complete. My question is, may I see the, what is done with the study? It's publicly funded, so it should be publicly available. I would love to see it. I will work with you to get me what has been done and please consider that. Second, much of the land on which the levy is built is not owned by the borough, unless the borough has more current information than I do. The land was leased by the borough in nineteen thirty-nine. There is a portion of the land that is within Williamson Park, but there is a significant portion that follows the levy. It extends approximately from where the stage is and the northern end of the park all the way down to the toll-ridgeline commission property near the Trenton Makes. All that land was given to the churches in eighteen eighty-five. The borough acknowledged this in their lease. It's directly quoted in the lease. And it is still their property as far as I know, unless there was a, an agreement at the time the levy was constructed, which I can't find any record of. So I just wanted to alert the borough to the fact that they may not own the land on which the levy is built, much of the land.
Thirty seconds.
I would say right now, undeveloped, our flood plan is now to wait for the water to go down. You want to build a spillway, perhaps a pump station. That's millions of dollars where all you have to do is leave the park alone, and you won't have to do any of that. And if the levy accreditation goes through, the people on Park and Central should not get rid of their flood insurance. Hopefully, your rates will go down if the levy is accredited. But it's still the same levy. Your risk of flood is still the same, and you need to keep your flood insurance and make sure that you do to protect yourself. That's all.
Hi.
All right, next, if Jackie would like to speak, send yourself.
Yes. As I don't think that this development will actually improve the parks, like the
Could you state your name and address?
Address, please, for the record.
Yeah. Jackie Carroll, thirty-six Union Street.
Thank you.
So developing a park and putting businesses and boutique or luxury apartments isn't going to improve the park. It's going to take away from it, and it's taking also away like the affordability of this town when the part, the apartments are going to start at seventeen hundred, I think it was, a month, which is like unaffordable for everyone I know. I don't know who can afford that. So I don't, I do see an issue with gentrification with this also. That's, that's a big issue, and you're pushing out land as well. And right now with COVID, where people are having issues of finding places to go and socialize at a distance and and like not go stir crazy. They have this land right around the corner from them, and I see it being used every day. So I don't, I don't see how this development would benefit us. I personally know it won't, won't benefit me, and I know many other people who don't see benefit with it. I don't know. This, the parks definitely not underutilized also, if that's something that you're trying to say about it. I'll just end it. That's it. That's my time.
Thank you. Joshua?
Hi, my name's Joshua Kuntz, and I live at forty Union Street. Thank you for my time and whenever I can go. Is that correct?
Yes, please go ahead.
I'd like to start off my time with a fun fact. Some of the earliest provable evidence of sledding is around a hundred BCE over two thousand years ago. Why is this relevant? Well, for starters, in case anyone hasn't noticed, it has snowed several times over the last month. But more so, it is relevant because every evening I have driven home from work, coming southbound down on River Road, right before I turned off Delmore onto my road, I have been able to see the treasures that is children sledding at Williamson Park. Night after night, children and their parents sled on the small but accessible hill at Williamson. Now, the first night I saw this, it was simply nice, kind of a reminder of when I was a child and had greater access to nature's wonders, something that is dwindling in this world. And I have to admit that it made me think about how long it has been since I've done something like that so wholesome and a nice activity. And then, night after night, eight PM rolls around and I drive, and I see them still diligently sledding. I remember how deceptively alluring it was because of just this image coming into it, being reminded of my history, going deeper into these memories of my own. I think about the preparation needed of donning my armor against the snow so I could survive the chill as long as my little limbs could last. I remember a degree of independence as I test the limits of my own childish thrills in the safety and approval of the adults. And I remember the return home to sanctity found in wholesome exhaustion and hot chocolate rewards. This practice of sledding is something that is economically accessible. Also, I, as a, growing up as a poor child, can really relate to that. If you only have three things, you can do it. You need a sled, snow, and a hill. And what did you know it? But the only easy accessible hill I've seen around here is at Williamson. An aspect of human culture dating back two thousand years, provably, is taken away by taking away this part and is taken away to the children of this town. It is in, it is honestly impressive to me to see how useful Williamson Park is, even in the weathers and other in this weather that others might consider quite unfavorable. And to me, this was another reminder of how precious and invaluable that space is, even if it means shrinking it. That is an invaluable resource that is being wasted, so we should not probably do that. I wanted to share this experience for those who may not have witnessed the survival of this cultural heritage firsthand, recently being fostered in our park. And so I would like to finish this
Thirty seconds.
with pointing out that the comprehensive plan is, if the comprehensive plan does not explicitly and in plain language put forward intentions of the further protections of Williamson Park and the preservations of its intentions against potential commercial and residential-based development, that the comprehensive plan feels as if it is looking to obfuscate the public awareness that such development is being attempted to give false hopes of helping ease tax burdens of what seems like a small and loud portion of our town. That is my time, and thank you for listening.
Next, it looks like we have Steve Fowler.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Fowler. I live at four 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 Hillside Avenue here in Morrisville. For information purposes, I am a member of the Morrisville Environmental Advisory Committee. However, I am not speaking tonight representing the EAC. I'm speaking strictly as a resident of of Morrisville. I have previously gone on record opposing any commercial and residential development of Williamson Park, and I will continue to to do so. The park belonged to the citizens when the property was gifted to the community, and forty-plus acres were set aside. It has become Williamson Park and continues to belong to all of us, and is a part of our present, and yes, it is a part of our future, the future that we're going to leave to our kids. Please keep in mind that a park of forty acres, the size of Williamson Park is once gone, can never be replaced. No other town in our area has such an incredible park, and if we do not take advantage of that park, it will be taken from us forever. I would like to see Morrisville use Williamson Park as a central part of any redevelopment to occur in Morrisville downtown. Let the park and our overall environment become the draw around any further redevelopment efforts. The park will become a central focus of any redevelopment that occurs in the town. The Bucks, the redevelopment authority of Bucks County, of the county of Bucks, has significant powers that are unavailable to municipality-owned operated entities. So when adjusting blighted properties, such as the ability to negotiate for the selection of a developer based on the merits of a proposal, rather than the highest bid for a property, these broad powers are especially important for the acquisition of properties for the purpose of eliminating blight and obtaining a redeveloper to work in accordance with an approved local municipal plan. So the redevelopment authority has broad powers when it comes to the utilization of Williamson Park. And I strongly urge And I strongly urge the citizens of Morrisville to keep in mind that once that park is gone, as we see it now, there's no getting it back. It's never going to occur anywhere else in Morrisville and will have been taken from all of us. So the other thing to note when we talk about utilization, even if the park is not used every day by every person in town, it's reassuring to know that it is there when it is needed for recreation, when it is needed to be alone, when it's needed for picnics, just playing through the park. Thank you. Ethically, it would be wrong to destroy this park or to take it for any other purpose than for which it is currently being used. Thank
Thank you, Steve. Next, Deborah Colgan.
Hi, Deborah Colgan, one twenty West Hendrickson Avenue. The first page of the comprehensive plan explains what a comprehensive plan is. It serves as a policy guide to decision making about physical development in the community. You should articulate and express these ideas so that future policy choices are clear and consensus driven. And more importantly, a comprehensive plan must reflect the values and opinions of the community to ensure that outstanding issues are being addressed and that the vision of the plan reflects the community's hopes and desires. A number of years ago, the borough conducted a good public process to determine our hopes and desires for revitalization. Among the outcomes was the blueprint for downtown and the designation of redevelopment areas with strategies. The comprehensive plan acknowledges these efforts and suggests adoption. The expansion of the commercial district to include the bridge commission parcels along Bridge Street was not part of this was not part of this vision, public vision, but it was done so by council with limited public notice and discussion. To now include the Williamson Park proposal in the comprehensive plan is just another example of a few people who've decided what's the best vision for Morrisville, contrary to the public's vision. There are a number of references regarding the Williamson Park proposal and all are incorrect. The first mention is on page fifty six. While it may be appropriate to mention that the proposal has been made and is under consideration, that is the only reference to the proposal that should be in the plan. Certainly, the statement that says that the concept at Williamson Park continues the pattern of potential redevelopment proposals must be removed because we don't know that yet. That proposal is still fluid. And the next reference to the proposal demonstrates this fluidity. It's in the Parks and Recreation section, page seventy three. The details provided have been rescinded and we do not know yet what is being offered. The only statement that should remain is from the final sentence. The borough should carefully consider the impact to its recreational facilities as it evaluates various redevelopment strategies and plans. The next time it's mentioned, it's an accomplishment. How a development offer could be considered an accomplishment is beyond me. It's changing the meaning of the word and it's not consistent with the actual borough accomplishments that are listed in the section. An accomplishment is something that has been carried out into effect. This does not belong in this section. Regardless, the Williamson Park proposal is not really known unless you guys or someone else knows something that we don't. Because it is not community, we don't know the costs and final impacts. We don't know the financial aspects and what this means to taxpayers. It certainly does not belong in the comprehensive plan as the plan needs to represent the community's vision. Again, we are pleading for an open process to planning and decision making. As taxpayers and residents, we have a right to know what is happening on the Williamson Park proposal and what staff is doing. All of you promised us transparent government, but we aren't seeing it yet. Please, please tell us what is going on and how you engage with the public on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, Nicole and Reza Rahman.
This is Nicole and Reza Rahman. We're at one fifty five Hillcrest Avenue. So I'm going to take the first three minutes and then my wife is going to speak for another three minutes. So let me start if that's okay. So honestly, I'm keeping this entire plan and proposal with a with a fairly open mind. I don't necessarily have strong opinions one way or the other, but to be honest, I do have some very serious reservations. So to give you some background, let me tell you what I did and share with you what my findings are worth. So I used to work in New York City for consulting here and there, but I'll go on to do that. Those consulting assignments, I really tried to avoid. I'll tell you the facts of that. So just going to Penn Station, which is, which is where you would go from Morrisville, it takes about two hours door to door. Going anywhere to Midtown Downtown, that's that you, in all practicality, I have to add at least half hour or an hour more, right? Especially to downtown. So that means a three hour one way trip back and forth. So definitely not something I would endeavor. But regardless, I went in paying some of my former colleagues that I used to work with in these consulting assignments and really had a chat with them as much as I could. And I had a chat with about three or four of these gentlemen. And I tried to find out where do they live, right? And the people that they work with, where do they live? And in all reality, what I found was, and I even asked them, hey, don't, don't, you know, just think about people our age. I want you to think about, you know, the newcomers in your company and the more junior people. And basically, the consensus is that people live in between twenty minutes, twenty miles to thirty mile radius at max, right? So most people are living in people like Central Jersey or North Jersey or one of the non Manhattan boroughs of New York or Connecticut. That's where they live. Almost no one told me that anyone lives at where we are, which is more like a fifty mile radius. So what that means is I really am continue to be very concerned what the economic viability and market research behind this proposal actually is. And if it is really not that sound, what the consequences are going to be in terms of you know, having more of that apartment stock or more renters, more frankly, low income people and what the consequences to the town is going to be, if that would ultimately what happens, despite what this developer might think is going on. So in, I would frankly find, find it a lot more comfortable if I actually got to see what this market research actually is. Is there even a market research? And how strong is it is before we do anything as drastic as putting yet another apartment complex in the town? So I do hope, you know, I don't, I'm not obviously in government.
Thirty seconds.
So I hope and plead honestly that, you know, we're going into this with very open minded fashion and, you know, ask all of the questions to these developers and if things really don't look good, not too good on this part.
Hi, my name is Nicole Ramon. I'm at one fifty five Hillcrest Ave. And I'll keep mine very short. I just have a couple of points that are just overarching, like really important to me. It's still, one is the loss of parkland. It's just every place I've ever worked or lived, once I've seen it gone, it just never comes back in our lifetimes, probably never. But right now, let's just worry about our lifetimes. I don't see it coming back. I know there's still be a little bit left, but the majority of it will be gone and that is a huge concern for me. And also the economic concern. Studies that I used to have to read for work, they all indicate that apartments typically cost more in services than they bring in with tax dollars. So again, I just don't see how losing parkland and losing money, it just doesn't, I don't know. It's just does not make sense to me. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, looks like we have Elizabeth Lester Abdallah.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Lester Abdallah. I live at thirteen twenty eight Poole Run Drive. So I'm a resident of LMT and not Morrisville, which I recognize that and take everything I say with a grain of salt, but I'm a member of the local Presbyterian church and invested in this community as well. So I just had a couple of comments or questions concerning the land that part of the proposal concerns. I think in your packet, you have a copy of the lease and the deed for Williamson Park. The lease that is dated from May second nineteen thirty nine and runs for ninety nine years. And then there's a deed of trust underlying the land upon which the lease is based, held by three churches in Trenton, First Baptist, First Presbyterian and Turning Point Methodist. The land was dated to them in eighteen eighty five and says that, quote, "They shall hold in trust as a park for the use of the several churches of what is basically Trenton and Morrisville." And then the lease to the borough states that the lease is because, quote, "The borough of Morrisville is desirous of developing a park for recreational purposes for the use of residents of the borough of Morrisville to be known as Williamson Park," end quote. And that the purposes of the deed are best realized, quote, "by leasing a forced land to the borough of Morrisville to be a part of the park development," end quote. And the terms of the lease include things like planting the same number of trees that are removed if ever there are any trees removed and keeping the park open for recreational purposes. According to the three churches through their representative, they have reached out to the council, to the Borough Council here and specifically asked that they be kept informed of plans to develop Williamson Park since this concerns the land that they hold the trust for. But they were not contacted by anyone on behalf of the borough or council regarding the December seventh presentation that Mr. McGrath and his lawyer made to the council or the December twenty first meeting in which the council unanimously approved the preliminary proposal. I also know that Mr. McGrath and his lawyer made mention at the presentation of that the redevelopment authority of Bucks County would be getting involved if the preliminary proposal was approved, which you all did unanimously in December. So to either purchase the church's interest or to condemn the land. My questions are just related to that. Why is the RDA involved since their purpose, their stated purpose, both in law and also on their website is to help in the rehabilitation of blighted and deteriorated properties, which this does not seem to be. Also wondering why the borough or council haven't reached out to the Trenton churches when this clearly concerns their land and the lease between the borough and these churches is not set to expire for another eighteen years. So I'm just wondering if the council is empowering the RDA to break that lease to either buy the church's land or condemn it. Okay. And if so, what the legal basis for that, breaking the leases? And then finally, just why was condemnation even discussed at all by Mr. McGrath's lawyer and designated this area as blighted when Williamson Park does not appear to meet any of the conditions for blight that are in the Pennsylvania statute for blight? So basically, I just want to know and also for the residents of Morrisville to know what the RDA's role in all of this is and their purpose and what is being done regarding the land that is currently held by the churches in Trenton and leased to the borough. So thank you and I hope that there can be answers at some point. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Shayna or Shannon. I'm not sure if they're there. We'll come back to them. Stephen Hop.
Hi, yeah, my name is Stephen Hoppy. I'm actually at one twenty one Park Avenue. I'm mostly here tonight because I would like to be appointed to the zoning board. But separately from that, just as a private citizen, I hear a lot of talk about the plans for the park. I'm not going to comment directly on that. But one concern I have, I moved in about a year ago about the property here. Spent a lot of time working from home this year and have seen the traffic patterns around Park Avenue and Central Avenue. And one of the huge quality of life issues I see with the park as it currently stands is the frequent large truck traffic that is diverted down our streets around the corner. And basically disrupts, you know, the quiet neighborhood that we live in, disrupts levy recreation and it disrupts, disrupts Williamson Park recreation. And I would love to see the borough work with the bridge authority or the bridge commission, the state police and other policing authorities in the area to develop a way to divert these trucks from coming down our street because it's usually when they're pulled over and then diverted down the street. The street's not built for that. It's curating the actual conditions of the roadway. And I would love to see something about that. Well, there's signage down at the end. It's supposed to be no parking near the park. Large parking lot in Williamson Park, but a lot of residents, I noticed, especially folks from New Jersey that come over to use Williamson Park like to park down at the end of the street here around the corner, which makes it even harder for these trucks to navigate and then continue on. That's it. I just think, you know, there's a lot of things we could do for the park in the future, but right now there's a couple of real quality of life issues that I'd like to see the borough investigate. Thank you.
Hey, Stephen, I have a question for you. I don't recall. Does Park Avenue have a sign that says no trucks except for local deliveries?
It does not. And like I said, it's usually policing action that diverts the truck because they're, you know, most of these trucks are too large to go over the Trenton Makes Bridge. They're not allowed to go down other streets in the area. There's actually no sign on Pennsylvania when you turn left onto Bridge Street that says, you know, truck for certain women not allowed. I think that would actually help a lot because it seems a lot of them make that left, get stuck before the bridge, diverted down Park Avenue. And, you know, I'm just waiting to hear a large crash down at the end as they can't make the curve.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Steve, this is Scott here. I'm in the, in the second word. I, I understand the, the issue with that. The, I think it's, it's, I'm not speaking for the bridge commission or the, or PSP, the state police, but I believe it's more than likely a safety issue. Again, it's, it's an unfortunate outcome of the safety issue versus stopping the truck right on Bridge Street and citing it or and or inspecting it versus getting it off of, off of Main Street onto Park. And I understand it's
Yeah, Scott, I totally understand. They've got to pull these trucks over somewhere. I think investigating a diversionary area to do that, that's away from all sorts of traffic. I mean, trucks are banned on lots of streets right in that area. I don't see why we would allow them to go down these smaller residential streets.
They, well, from them coming, coming across the bridge, we don't have any jurisdiction over that side. So it's, we can't catch them until it's too late, for lack of a better phrase. And I mean, if they could be escorted down to Delmore and make a right on Delmore and get out of the parking lot, then the island didn't be, you know, dealt with down there or I'm sure there's something we can look into, but I
Park was redeveloped and there was a way to include some pull over area for that, I think that'd be a really smart idea.
Right. So
It's also, I mean, you know, everybody talks about how abused the park is. I do see a lot of people there, especially small people, you know, children. Just waiting for a disaster to happen as a kid runs off to the street.
Right. I get it. I get it. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. I'm going to try Shayna again or Shannon if you're there.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, my name is Josh Adair. I live on forty nine North Delmore. I'm in the park every single day. I, that's the first place I go when I get up. I walk across the street. I take my dog out. I clean up his, you know, his poop and I do what I gotta do. I, I enjoy that park. I'm not going to keep you long. I just want to let you know I'm another member of the community that doesn't want this. And I find that there's like two kinds of people here. They're either people that don't know this is about to happen or they don't want it to happen if they do know it's going to happen. It's going to impact our lives a lot bigger than we realize. Traffic, I want to know traffic on Bridge Street, imagine that for a minute during rush hour now. You got all these businesses and more places for people to live. I mean, just think about it for a second. Do you live here? I mean, if you do live here, that's something we should think about. I haven't, I, I haven't heard anybody talk about the wildlife that's down there. I don't know where they're supposed to go. I don't know where the kids are supposed to play anymore. I mean, where, where does, where do we start caring about things like this? I haven't heard anything about an environmental impact plan. I want to know about that. Is that something that's available to the public? If it is, like, where is it? So that's, that's pretty much, I just want to voice my concerns and I appreciate you taking the time to listen. Thanks very much.
Thank you. We've got Ava KP or Eva.
Hello, good evening and thank you for letting me speak. So a lot of the things have already been addressed this evening.
Name, name, name and address, please.
Eighty five Central Avenue. I'm also one of the residents that are in the immediate area or around the park. And one of the major concerns that I have is that we really hear almost nothing about the development and how that would impact especially residents along Delmore Avenue and along Central and Park Avenue. What I am also missing in all of the discussions is really seeing the facts, what this development would actually do for us. It always says, well, it will definitely reduce taxes, but I would really like to see numbers. What does that mean? How much are we reducing it or how much will it in fact go up? So we need much more clarity there. Also, there has never been any communication with us here and I've lived here for a year. What that would mean when construction machinery would be brought in, what impact that would have on us, the noise, the disruption here of the peaceful neighborhood. what impact that would have on us, the noise, the disruption here of the peaceful neighborhood, the toxic, the toxins in the air from all of that. Plus, I see today firsthand, when the snow was melting, the entire park where the grocery store and hotel and parking lot is supposed to be built is basically a beautiful pond, and the ducks are enjoying it very much. So, of course, there can be studies done and there can be found some ways of leaving that water somewhere else. But I'm very much convinced that this will just be a threat to our basements and to our backyards, as well as the levy, that it might not function anymore. So that's a big concern of mine. Then, in your comprehensive plan, you state that people enjoy living here for its small-town feel. However, when I look at the proposed development, they are thinking of bringing in people who will then go to Philadelphia or New York City. Also, it says in the comprehensive plan that there's a focus on families and kids. The way I understand this development, it's really more for millennials who want to focus on their careers and just see this as a nice way of living close to major highways and the train station. So this actually goes against what the comprehensive plan states about this beautiful town of Morrisville. Then, transport or the traffic pattern has been brought up, and that is also a major concern of mine. Because when you plan a development of such grandeur, why not thinking of other parts in town where there wouldn't be such a bottleneck? Because people are as it is, standing on the bridge at 5:00 in the evening or.
30 seconds.
And so this has to really be reconsidered. Plus, another concern of mine is how will this impact all the other parts in town that are basically empty right now? That also need developed or redeveloped? Just putting a nicely looking, wonderful town center in the park might sound wonderful for the developer, but how will this really help our town? So lots of questions. I would really like to see answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eva. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. So I think we may be finished with.
I'm sorry, I was muted. All right, we're moving on to 6A, which is approval of the Borough Council Budget Meeting of 12/10/2020. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Abstention. Okay, motion passes. 7 Finance, 7A, the Treasurers' Report. Micah, did you get that out? I don't remember seeing it.
The Treasurers' Report?
Yes. Yes, the financial report. Did you get the?
Yeah, the financial statement went out this afternoon.
Okay, all right.
Soon Senate, I believe.
All right, so everybody.
In a minute.
I believe they dropped it.
Yeah. Well, the bill list. 6, 7. 7B is the call for a motion to approve the bill list, which did go out in the drop on Friday. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. Comments?
This on the bill list, is that correct? I'm sorry, I'm distracted for a moment.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I just have a question for Micah. Maybe he knows offhand. If not, we did receive a check for tonnage for, I'm sorry, for recycling tonnage? I'm sorry, we paid, what, $950? Do you know what the time period was for that?
No, I do not. If you wish, you can email. I'll look into it.
Okay, all right. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a question. So Micah, are you looking? I know that when we were in the budget process, one of Mr. Mitchell's concerns was that, you know, there wouldn't be enough cash to get us through until the taxes came in. How does the cash flow look?
I think Mr. Mitchell's presumption is correct. It's going to be tight.
Are you doing a cash flow analysis to see how it's going to be?
I look at the bank every day.
Can you do that for us in case we have any problems? Could you send us any kind of update, any analysis, anything that we should be concerned about?
Sure, I can send you the bank balances if that's what you would like to see.
Well, a cash flow analysis. Like what bills do you think are going to come versus what revenue we still have, that kind of stuff?
Well, the biggest ones are the ones that come every month. So your public, your sanitation, those are the big ones. So you see them.
I understand, but as a cash flow analysis, can you provide that or no?
Let's see what I can do.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, roll call, Virginia? Virginia?
Sorry, sorry, I was muted. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lavelle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Paul? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, on to reports. Don't believe we have a mayor's report. I don't believe he's with us. Police Chief Report. The police chief did forward a report, and I will read it. It is the chief's report to 12/16/2021. Please excuse my absence tonight. I am securing the vaccine site at the Newtown campus of the Bucks County Community College with the Major Incident Response Team. On January 24th, Morrisville Police, along with the Peace Center and the Bucks County District Attorney's Office, hosted Walking While Black, which hosted approximately 110 participants, along with 10 police officers. Each participant watched the movie and then engaged in a conversation in small groups. This was a great event for all involved. On February 18th, I will be meeting with the Bucks County Chapter of the NAACP. The chapter has been meeting with departments around Bucks County to talk about the future of policing and to gather specifics of how each department operates. Thank you. Managers' Report. Do we have anything, Micah, that you'd like to report on?
Not at this time.
Okay. 8D is Committee Reports. Do we have any committees that wish to report anything?
Ted, you and Nancy went to the school board meeting. Do you have anything to tell us about that?
No, I was just going to get to that after. There was really nothing. There was nothing really discussed. It was, there was really, because of the fact that the district is doing distance learning, there wasn't really much to discuss.
They're going to reevaluate at the end of the next, you know, the next quarter. There's no word on the matter Park School at this time. Nothing that can be shared yet with the public. I mean, they have, they have an agreement, I think, or we're working on an agreement. And that, that was it. It was a very quick meeting.
All right, no one else has anything. We'll move on to action items. So we only have one, which is 9A, a motion to affirm Micah Heinz to continue as acting borough manager. Until such time, a full-time manager is hired.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Micah for taking this on. I know you were already pretty well maxed out, Micah. And having less resources is never a good thing. I appreciate you jumping in and doing what needs to be done for us.
I'll do my best.
And I'd like to second that, that yes, you have taken on a lot, and we appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Virginia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lavelle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, motion passes 8-0. That's the end of the action items. We do have some committee and appointments, committee and board appointments. They're actually both boards. The first one is the Recreation Advisory Board. It's a three-two-year appointment set to expire in May 21st, 2022. I believe we've officially only received one letter of interest, if I can find it, from a Mr. King. Yes, from Mr. Jack.
I'm sorry, Ted, I thought we nominated Mr. King and.
I thought, I don't have the minutes aren't finished yet, and I couldn't find my, I thought we did. I was back and forth with Virginia. The minutes aren't ready yet, and I cannot find any notes.
We, we had discussion about that, but we never furthered it. We said that we were going to hold off because there was no Recreation Board meeting.
Right.
No, I thought we voted for Mr. King and Brad, and we left one open.
I don't have the minutes, so I couldn't, I haven't had a chance to go back to them to view the meeting.
Because Mr. Bowers said that, why would we wait when somebody had an interest and that then we voted in Mr. King?
I guess we'd have to wait for the record, but I really thought we just missed the whole thing because.
Well, I'm not opposed to.
Do you remember?
My note didn't think we voted in Jack King with a vote yes, 8 to nothing, and Brud Anderson with a vote of yes, 7 to 1.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's what I remembered.
And I don't think we had a third, and I thought we were going to allow the current people, I think Nelson Berry was one. I don't know if he put in a letter or not. He was here, he left.
Well, I mean, they haven't met, they haven't met yet. So, I mean, if we want to wait another month to give anybody an opportunity to put in a letter of interest rather than just pull a name out of the air, I'm okay with that, as long as everyone else is.
I guess we could do that. I mean, I'm okay with that.
Was everyone else?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Jane wants to say something. I don't know if she's planning on.
I was at the meeting last month, and I wrote notes for everything. And you did appoint Jack King and Brud Anderson, votes 8 to 0 to the Recreation Advisory Board.
I just pulled up my notes.
You just found it too? Okay.
That's what I thought, and I was actually questioning the borough, and we weren't sure, so. Oh, is everyone okay with waiting to see if anyone else puts in for the one position that's open?
Sure. I think we should, since we don't have an official name.
We don't have an official name. All right. Moving on to the zoning hearing board. It's a one-three-year term to expire on January 2nd, 2023. We had two people put in.
I have a question about, didn't we say, or I thought I said that it should be 2024, the three-year term?
Yes, correct.
So. So it's actually expires on 1/2/2024. And I, at this point, I'd like to nominate Suzanne Zukowski.
All right, we have a nomination. Do we have another?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Hop.
All right, we have a nomination. Do we have another? Hearing none. I'm going to close nominations. All right. I guess since we have just two names, we'll just go through. Virginia will do a roll call, and we'll just say the person that we wish to go through. And if they have a majority, then that person will be appointed.
Ted, there's actually, yes, there's actually, I believe, one position and then one that is a.
Alternate.
Yes. So there's actually two positions available. Suzanne happens to be on it currently, but the alternate position expires tomorrow. So there are two positions.
Well, let's do the, let's do the three-year appointment first, and then if anybody wants to nominate someone for the alternate, then we'll do that one, so. So I have two nominations. Nominations are closed for the three-year term to expire on 1/2/2024. Virginia, could you do a roll call, and each member of council will state the person that they wish to nominate for the position?
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Stephen Hop.
Mr. Lavelle?
Stephen Hop.
Mr. Nickel?
Stephen Hop.
Mr. Paul?
Suzanne Zukowski.
Mr. Robinson?
Stephen Hop.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Suzanne Zukowski.
Mr. Yeager?
Suzanne Zukowski.
And Mr. Parker?
Is he muted?
No, I'm not. I'm back on. I guess Mr. Hop.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Vote. Okay. All right.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Welcome.
All right, we have the alternate position.
I'd like to nominate Suzanne Zukowski for the alternate position.
I just wanted to, just wanted to confirm the length of that term before.
That is also, that is also a three-year term, and it will expire February 17th of 2024.
2024, okay. So a three-year term is an alternate to expire on February 17th, 2024. We have a nomination already. Do we have any other? Do we have any others? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close nominations. Since we only have one person, we're just going to do a roll call, yes or no?
Do we have to advertise that before we can just vote for an alternate?
I believe it's.
It's been on the website.
Yeah, it's been up for a while.
Oh, okay. Just, I'm just checking.
Yeah, and actually, the current alternate has been advising the borough that his term is up and he's not asking to be reappointed, so. All right, so we have a nomination, and only one nomination, and nominations are closed. So Virginia, can we do a roll call? It's a yes or no from council for Suzanne Zukowski.
Okay. Mr. Bowers?
No.
Mr. Lavo?
No.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. So five to three on that vote.
Yes, so, congratulations Suzanne. Alright. We're almost there. Alright, 10 is other business. I put in discussion on the comprehensive plan. I don't know if anybody else wants to discuss this anymore, or I know there are some corrections that need to be done again, and, uh, we were given an email to forward them on. So if anybody else has anything they wanna add about it, or if they have any other things they wanna discuss about other business.
I have a few questions, but I, I didn't wanna have to spend this, the time this evening. I think we've, uh, I, I just think it might be, uh, I don't wanna belabor it, but should, should we be contacting not just the Bucks County Planning Commission, but wouldn't it be also prudent to go with our local, uh, uh, planning commission and, and see?
I would, I would recommend.
Think I have to say?
Yeah, I would recommend both. I mean, anything that was sent to the county, I would recommend that we CC the, the chair of ours.
Yeah, that's what, I think I'd like to, to do that. So my, my couple of questions, I'll, I'll send off to them. I think one of the, the, the one thing that concerns me is this, a blueprint, a blueprint for the future. That's the, um, the, the plan that we have, and it's, it's, uh, referenced, but we've never, that's never been officially approved. So it's just something I think we have to, uh, review.
Okay.
So.
So Ted, what is the process, though, with these changes? Like, a lot of residents had commentary, and they're, they're not wrong, but, um, are they just to send that off to the Bucks County Planning Commission, or, like, what is the process for these changes? Because you can't have 5,000 people sending in their opinions on things.
I, well, I mean, that's part of the planning commission's responsibilities to, you know, go through the boroughs, rec, I mean, boroughs, planning commission, the borough councils, and then the publics. Um, I mean, what was sent to the borough will forward off, you know, we'll make sure it gets forwarded off to both the Bucks County Planning Commission as well as, um, as our own. But, um, you know, they're the one who works on ferreting out the, the changes and stuff that are, that, you know, are relevant or needed or whatever, so. I mean, I don't, I, I wouldn't recommend that the public, you know, all the public just starts emailing them right away with, you know, e- every change that they might have, but I, I think if, the, the ones that we've already gotten, and I believe they would, they've listened to the comments that were made tonight, and um, we'll take those recommendations.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Based on some of the comments that we got from the public tonight, uh, I just wanted to point out that council isn't directly involved in writing this document. This planning document is being done through the planning commission at their meetings, and it's being paid for, the Bucks County Planning Commission to come in and basically, from what I could tell, do the majority of the work and the updating. So comments that are directed at council trying to sneak things into this plan are absolutely 100% incorrect, because council has no direct input into this plan. Uh, basically, what, what has been posted on the website has actually been posted most of the time before council even got the comprehensive plan. So I just wanna point that out, that this has been ongoing for, I don't know, better half, better of a year and a half in conjunction with our planning commission.
Since 2019.
At their meetings, and it's just finally come to council for consideration and some slight modification.
Exactly.
Mr. Parker? But council ultimately has to, they're the ones that have to adopt it, so.
Yes.
Um, I think that if we have anything that we prefer, or would, you know, have a conver- conversation with our local planning commission, or, uh, yeah, planning commission, I think we should go, I think we should do that.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I, I think what missed, if, I don't wanna speak for you, um, Mr. Bowers, but I believe you were referring to some of the comments that made it seem like council was sneaking changes into this. You know, and some of the things that they highlighted that they've taken out of context and tried to make it seem like we're sneaking changes in to make things more favorable for development, stuff like that. Is, is that what you were referring to?
You're correct, then.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I ignored a lot of, a lot of the comments and the comments about the, the development in the park. You know, there was a lot of comments, you know, insinuating that we're hiding things and moving forward with things, and, and, you know, I'm just not gonna address conspiracy theories and, and, and it's just, it's not worth my time, nor the councils to worry about what, what people see behind the shit, you know, behind the next corner that's not really there. Um, we're in the preliminary stages of getting a proposal. That somebody wants to make a development, you know, they did a proposal, and that's where we are. We're waiting for him. And, you know, there was, like we said before, there's a million and one things that this development, uh, needs to, to do and meet before it moves anywhere. And to just make assumptions that we're sneaking things through, it's, you know, it's frustrating, but we have to, you know, just do our due diligence, and, uh, when there's something to report to the public, we report it. There, that's the transparency that we, that, that we work on. It's when we have actually something to present, we will present it. And right now, there is nothing to present that hasn't already been presented to the public, so. I'm getting off my soapbox. Anybody else? So I'm sorry, Nancy, go ahead.
Just something quick. Uh, I, I do agree that there's a lot of reference to that plan in the comprehensive plan, which I think really, without completely watering it down, I think it needs to be referenced. But even Mike Roding said you can reference it, but it's not, you know, the merits will eventually have to come after the plan has even been formally vetted, so, um, it, it maybe, I think it's in there a little bit too much. That's just my personal opinion, and when looking at what was passed with regards to Bridge Street and so forth, the other side of Bridge Street, um, I'm sorry, the east side of Bridge Street, east of Delmore Avenue wasn't included in some of those original, um, zonings. So, um, but now they're referenced as such, so that, those are the only things I'd like to fix, so.
And, and like, we go back to, uh, what Mr. Bowers said, you know, i- it's a plan developed by the Bucks County, you know, planning commission, and it's funded by them, and, you know, there's input from, from council and from our own planning commission, but ultimately, it's, it's their comprehensive plan, and you know, we, we need to highlight things that we don't, we don't want, and if that's one of them and everybody agrees, then, uh, we can forward that on to them and.
I disagree that it's not their plan. It's Morrisville's plan.
It's developed by them for us, and we need to make the.
For us, right. We pay them to help us.
It has all of our names on it.
I agree with that, but it's, we need to direct them.
Our plan. It's everyone's plan. We can't, we, we can't hide behind the RDA. That's ridiculous.
It's not the RDA. It's the planning commission.
And we're not hiding behind it, but it's our plan. It's always our joint plan. We're all, we have to stand behind it and be comfortable with it or make changes. Exactly, and that's what I'm saying. They need to be, we need to, they're developing a plan for us, and we need to clarify what we want in it, not in it. That's what I said. So, alright.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Are, are we in, um, or, or, uh, comment period now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, excuse me, one second. I just wanted to thank Micah also, uh, for pitch hitting beautifully, I might add, for our manager in court.
Yes.
A week or so ago, whenever, I lost track. As you recall, originally, the judge scheduled it for like weeks after the February 1st deadline. And then we wrote to him, and we had this whole back and forth. He won, he gave us two hours to give him the sites, and we wrote back in 15 minutes and gave him, gave him what he wanted, and then he said, and he moved the hearing to February 1st, which was the deadline. And I wrote back saying, you know, we'll be there, just hope it doesn't snow. And of course, we had a snowstorm. They closed the court, and they closed, they closed the courthouse down for two days. And so we finally got in. Micah did a phenomenal job pitch hitting for, uh, our manager, and, uh, it was approved by the judge. Thank you.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, um, I do wanna touch base, because there was a lot of comments on the park. I'm not gonna take up too much time, but I do wanna address a couple of things. Um, one, somebody made mention about Gilmore and Associates, or Gilmore Associates making a decision to not move forward with the, with the plan that is not accurate. The borough decided that and, and pushed that to Gilmore Associates, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, COVID-19 was a big reason. The other big reason was the cost, um, and not knowing with COVID-19 how our, how our financials were gonna look for 2020. And third was, yes, to, to listen to the, to the proposed plan. Now, for everybody who has comments about the proposed plan and concerns about it, I appreciate you. Keep speaking up. I got no problem with that. I am not ignoring you. I'm hearing every word, but I just want you to think for a minute and put yourself in council's position. We're be, we're be looking in the face of a hundred to 150 million dollar investment into our town. If we wanna be able to answer all of the questions that you guys have, you wanna know the impact, you wanna know how it's gonna benefit us, you wanna know how it's, whether it's gonna cost, which it shouldn't cost the taxpayer anything, that's why the developer does it. But all these things that, that we have questions about, no one can answer if we don't allow the process to take place. So understand that as we're council, watching everybody, and, and we're talking 8,000 plus people, not a couple dozen, 8,000 plus people we have the, the best interest of. So as we're doing that, if we were to take the stance of we don't even wanna hear about this, you'll never get your questions answered. So as we're going through this process, guys, again, keep speaking up, keep giving your opinions, and, and keep getting involved. That's, that's healthy. That's great. But understand that what, what you're up against is questioning whether or not looking into it to be able to answer the questions is the right answer, and in my opinion, getting the information is the only answer. If we just shut the door on the option, and we don't let the developer bring to us his findings and let him do his, his due diligence, no one will ever be able to answer any of the questions you guys have. So just please understand and be patient, because these things don't move in, in a day or two. These things take a very long time to manifest. So when you don't hear anything for a month or two, it's because we haven't heard anything for a month or two, because this is the timeframe that it takes to really do deep dive due diligence. Now, I've spoken directly, as all council has, I believe at this point, directly to the developer, and I've spoken to them personally about Morrisville Little Lee. The very first time I spoke to the developer, I said, what are you gonna do about Morrisville Little Lee? I believe the answer that they're giving right now isn't, we don't know what to do at Morrisville Little Lee, because they said it in the last meeting that they presented. They're waiting for council to give them some guidance. In other words, they can't just go ahead and say they're taking a piece of property that they don't own to build ball fields. So they peel back to just give you the honest answer of, well, council and the town needs to tell us where these fields would go. So just understand that this is gonna be a very long process, dealing with this a year, two years, uh, down the road on this thing. This isn't something that I would expect anyone to, to have a boatload of movement on, or any, any movement on for quite some time. So if you feel like you're not getting information, it's because this is how long things take like this. These things are not done overnight, guys, and that's, I just wanted to address, because I hear you, I, I understand you're frustrated, and I am not ignoring you. I hear every word you're saying, and I want you guys to know that it's not, i- if you're hearing that we're, that we're listening to the developer, it's because we wanna get those same answers you guys do, but we can't if we just shut the door on them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Alright, hearing no one else, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved.
All of us, second.
Yes.
Anybody?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Aye.